The panel is prepared. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the day and time set for the April 8th, 2025, 6:00 PM regularly scheduled meeting of the Westland Planning Commission. Thank you for all who are in attendance. If you can please join us, rise and join us in the reading of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Durante.
Present.
Folks. Absentees. Hobs.
Present.
Hopkins.
Here.
Richards.
Present.
Rounds.
Present.
Stachow.
Present.
Swokis.
Present.
Rep. Port.
Present. Thank you very much, Administration. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the March 4th meeting, 2025, seeking a motion to approve.
Still no support.
Motion by Stachow, support by Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve the March 4th meeting minutes. Durante.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Swokis.
Yes.
Rep. Port.
Yes.
Your minutes are approved.
Thank you very much. All right, this is the time of our meeting where we invite the citizens to comment on items not on our agenda. Agendas can be acquired up at the podium here. This is not an opportunity to comment on items that are on the agenda. Those will be handled in their due course. This is for items that we have not added to our agenda that you'd like to call to our attention. If there's anybody who'd like to speak on a matter not on the agenda for today, on my right, please rise to the podium. Seeing none.
I live right by the, well, the Dairy Dan. Everybody knows the Dairy Dan. And there was a, I got a postcard that said there was going to be a retail plaza put at the corner of Lynnville and Ford Road. And I was just wondering, it's probably going to have a parking lot, I would assume.
Administration, is that an item on the agenda?
That item was not ready for this month's agenda. There were some issues with it during the internal plan review, so we removed it from this month's agenda. It should be coming back either in May or in June. You will receive the same postcard that you did. Feel free to call the Planning Department office, and we will confirm that it is on the agenda.
Okay, so there is, I'm assuming, an ordinance of Westland if there is a parking lot and cars are going to be there every single day, all year long? They're supposed to be paved and some kind of drainage?
The best time to discuss that, sir, is when this item comes before the Planning Commission, or if you want to give us a call in the morning, we will take your contact information.
Well, my point was that right across the street is the so-called Walton Ford Service that has at least 12, 15 cars parked on the dirt every day. And I've gotten nowhere with the city to do anything about it. So I wanted to make sure that if cars are parked on something, it should be not dirt.
Okay, yes, sir. It will be paved. It will be required to be paved, any parking and driving surfaces.
And if you were living right next door to it and you want, and they were not abiding by that, what course does a citizen have when the city doesn't seem to respond?
Sir, number one, there is a dust abatement ordinance, and that will be complied with. Also, the city does employ statute enforcement. So it should be handled, and we appreciate you bringing the concern to our attention.
How would those?
Sir, we cannot actually spend much more time on this. This will appear on a future agenda, and that will be the appropriate time to get into the details of it.
Do you have a person or number I could contact? A name?
You'll be notified of the...
You can give them a business card.
Oh, okay. If you'll step over there, they'll give you a business card.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none. Anybody on my left wish to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Very good then. Moving on to our action items. The first matter is old business. At this time, we do have two items of old business that need to be removed from the table, placed on the floor for consideration. Motion by Swokis to remove those from the table, place them on the floor for consideration. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Both items are removed from the table and placed on the agenda at this time. I would like to ask that the second item, which is the administrative matter, be moved in the orders of the day to item number five, and item number five renumbered to item number Motion by, I'm sorry, motion by Durante and supported by, oh, God, I'm so sorry, Hopkins. This should actually be able to be handled by a voice vote. Those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. On to case number, we reopen case number 1707J. And before we do, I recognize that we do have a full gallery here, and I'm assuming, because I see a number of very familiar faces, we have a number of people who are returning to voice their opinions on this matter. This has already been discussed. This matter has been opened and closed for public hearing. We will hear the public again. However, I do ask that you not repeat anything that you've previously already covered. If you do, I will in fact attempt to curtail your commentary. We do have a very full agenda otherwise, and we need to get through it. To that end, I will be limiting any comments to three minutes or less, please. Everybody okay with that? Okay, seeing no pitchforks or torches.
No.
Case number 1707J is now back open. Administration, do you have anything that you'd like to update us with on this site plan?
Yes, I'll just summarize what this is generally for the audience, and then describe some major modifications that occurred. And I know the developer's representative would also like to speak briefly. The subject property comprises of about 17 acres and is zoned CB1, low intensity commercial business. The petitioners requesting site plan and special land use approval to develop a 24-hour skilled nursing home with 98 private suites, each including a private bathroom and shower. The skilled nursing home will provide rehabilitation and physical therapy services, the majority of which will be inpatient, along with a limited amount of outpatient services. The nursing home will also offer a broad range of amenities and social activities for its residents, including a dining hall and kitchen. At length, at the previous Planning Commission meeting on March 4th, the video is located on the city's YouTube page. We discussed this site plan at length. So to keep it brief tonight, I will just discuss the major modifications that were made as a result of concerns voiced by residents of the Abbeys, the adjacent residential neighborhood. Number one, driveways and entrances. There was a large conversation, mainly the priority of concern, were entrances, full-service driveways, two of them located on Campus Drive, which is a shared drive between this property, subject property, and the Abbeys. The developer is removing both of these full-service driveways and proposing one tonight off of Marquette at the request of the Planning Commission. There will still remain a driveway at Campus Drive in the northeast corner that will be gated and only accessible for emergency services at the request of the fire department. There was an issue of people wanting to get to the nursing home, driving through the Abbeys community, maybe using GPS or being guided by GPS. And as a result, we had a conversation about changing the address to a Marquette address, and the Planning Department is willing and able to do that and will do that. There was a concern about construction traffic. The developer has indicated that construction traffic will enter the site from Marquette. There was a conversation about setback off of Campus. The developer is retaining the 50-foot setback from the edge of Campus Street/Drive and proposing screening and landscaping in access of the required landscaping requirements via the zoning ordinance, and an updated landscaping plan was provided to the Planning Commission today and visible up on the screen. The lighting plan also limits the lighting visible on Campus Drive. And I think this is the extent of the major modifications that were done by the developer to mitigate and alleviate any of the, well, the concerns that we heard by the residents of the Abbeys at the previous Planning Commission meeting while still allowing the project feasibility to move forward through the process. I'm happy to answer any questions or go into details on any topics that you might want to. The developer wants a couple minutes, I think, just to highlight some of the modifications as well, if that's okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. If I could please have the petitioner rise to the podium, be recognized. Hi again, petitioner, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
If you had anything that you'd like to add to the presentation?
And I just wanted to introduce myself, Mark Cohen, President, North Coast Architects. And with me this evening is Julie Townsend, the Civil Project Manager from Dryzingan Associates. Mr. Ayub did a wonderful job of taking my six highlight points and going over them. Those basically hit right on the head from what was discussed at the previous Planning Commission meeting, as well as some additional conversation that Julie had with the Abbeys of Westland Homeowners Association. There were some emails back and forth with them to kind of discuss what we were doing and give the direction so that they were aware. I think Mr. Ayub hit on all the six points that were addressed, and therefore, if we have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them as well.
Thank you very much. If I can have you regain your seat. We will open this up to the accumulated citizens. This is a public hearing. Once again, I do remind the citizens that we have already satisfied the requirement of having a public hearing. This is a courtesy that we are extending to you. At this time, if there's anybody on my right that wishes to speak on this matter, please limit yourself to three minutes or less, and please only refer to new items that we have not already discussed. Recognizing that, nice young lady over on the end, please rise to the podium and be recognized.
Chairman, how would you like me to indicate three minutes?
Please indicate when the time has expired.
I just wanted to ask two questions that I'm not clear on. What was the reasoning for keeping the north entrance and maybe not using the one that was lower by the assisted living?
I believe I can answer that one. The northern entrance was provided, initially, there was a C-shaped plan, and the secondary entrance was primarily for safety purposes. The fire department needs a full round in order to be able to get their vehicles through, which is why the current proposal has that still existing there. However, it's going to be gated and only opened in emergency.
But that wouldn't work at the lower side of Campus Drive?
I'm sorry?
That wouldn't work at the lower side of Campus Drive?
We can't fit two curb cuts over there because of the high-pressure gas line.
Okay. The second question I had was, why can't the facility be pushed back more from Campus Drive?
Once again, the high-pressure gas line, there's a minimum setback from it for safety purposes.
To have a building there?
Could explode.
For the building? Okay. I don't quite understand things, but I wanted to ask, thank you.
Is there anybody on my left wish to rise and speak on this matter?
Just your left.
Gentle lady? So I recall you are the leader person.
Yeah, my name is Sandra Powers. I'm the president of the board. Appreciate you listening to the Abbeys and all of their concerns. I think, Mo, you hit pretty much all of the concerns and explained them very well. So I'd like to thank you all for working with us. We do appreciate the changes made. One thing that remains a concern to me, and I think to the rest of the community, we do try to limit the traffic going through our community for safety purposes and because we maintain the roads and such. So the one entrance on the north side that you indicated was for fire department use only? Is that for fire department use only? Is that for fire trucks only? Or is that also for, like, say, ambulances?
I'll pass it over, and I'm sure that the developer will comment on it after we get through the citizens' comments.
Okay, that's fine.
But as I understand it, that curb cut remains but is going to be gated and only to be used in emergent situations. It's not for through traffic.
Understood. But for emergency, I'd like that defined what that means. Does that mean an ambulance coming in to pick up somebody? Does that mean an ambulance dropping somebody off? Or does that mean if the place is burning, is it for fire trucks only? So that's my specific question on that.
And he will address that, make it very clear.
In part two of that, same question. As you mentioned that it was going to be gated, which we really appreciate, so people won't be going in and out of there generally. What assurance do we have that that gate will remain there in the future? Like, five years from now, somebody breaks down the gate because they're mad, they want to get in? You know, what's the plan? What's our recourse? Who do we call if it's no longer gated? You know what I'm saying?
Once again, I'm sure he'll address that, that future plan.
Okay. Other than that, that's all I have. And I do, again, appreciate working with you all and the developer and getting these changes made for the Abbeys. Thank you.
And we also very much appreciate the patience that the Abbeys have for this project.
Thank you.
Anybody additionally on my right? The young lady in the blue, please.
Thank you for calling me young. Compared to me, you are. First, if I may ask a question?
Sure.
I dropped off a letter to the commissioners yesterday.
Are you Ms. Dorsh?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Ms. Dorsh. We have received your letter, and we've read it, and we've considered it seriously as you've requested.
Okay. Maybe some of the items that I brought up could be discussed so that everyone here could hear what your thoughts and opinions are, or the probability of any of those suggestions being acted on or considered seriously? Or is that not the right time to do that?
Specifically, what are you referring to? You have three lines.
Well, I had some questions. I was hoping that if you all had a chance to read the letter or someone, that they could be answered.
I'm prepared to answer anything that you'd like to ask.
Would you like me to go through and read the letter and stop?
You have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Well, the first major issue I had is, as my friend mentioned, why is it impossible to set back the whole structure? I, in my limited capacity, measured out, thinking that the whole structure could be moved over closer to that easement line of that pipeline without having anything built over it.
There's a setback required by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and it is, as I understand it, and I'm planning on talking to the civil engineer to make it absolutely clear. It is moved as close to that pipeline as it can be. And specifically, there's an additional amount of space that's required for safety purposes by law because there's going to be handicapped individuals housed in that location.
So it's beyond the easement?
It's a safety issue, and as I understand it, it is as close to that pipeline as it can be.
Okay. Well, that answers a lot of my queries. One was, there's a dirt pile that's been sitting on the corner there, and I addressed my concerns about that, and...
And if you had any evidence, actual evidence, that it was toxic, we would love to hear that or see that evidence.
Well, of course, I don't have that. I was hoping that someone within the city would be happy to check that out as a matter of normalcy in construction projects, especially given the fact that the park on the west of our area had all those soil toxins in it.
Do you have any indication that it is toxic?
No, sir.
Okay.
So then you're saying it won't be addressed or looked into?
It's not an issue. It hasn't been an issue for years. Nobody's been sick.
So, okay.
It's just a dirt pile, ma'am.
All right. Does the city know why that dirt pile has been there?
Certainly, if you had any evidence that it was toxic, we would love to hear that and consider it. Seriously.
Is the soil daddy tested before it's disrupted?
It would have to have been tested, ma'am. When they came in and tested the area that is toxic down over by, they do a, when Superfund comes in, and I apologize, I am trained as an environmental attorney. I know how this actually, this process actually works. They do a comprehensive surface sweep up to about, I think it's like a half a mile, which clearly covers that area, which is why I don't really think that there's much concern with a random pile of dirt. They definitely would not have skimped on the surface testing, and they drill testing wells around the targeted area to see if there's toxic leachate, making a plume that's, because they have to identify where the plume's actually moving. And there was no indication that the leachate has actually escaped the area that they have, and those monitoring wells have been going ever since that area was remediated.
So you are assuring me that that area was tested?
I am assuring you that if there is a concern, the possibility that it is a concern is extremely slight.
Okay.
We're at four minutes, chairman.
I hope you're correct. I'm sorry?
Chairman, we're at four minutes.
Okay. Ma'am, did you have anything lastly to speak? We took a look at your entire thing. We did look at it. I did some research on your behalf. I just don't see any, anything that we can actually use. I did note your concern over the wildlife. Unfortunately, that's not a legitimate concern. It's never been a legitimate concern that would overtake somebody's right to use their property.
Okay. I think we're all learning very much at this hearing, and I appreciate your answers.
Well, I'd be happy to speak to you at length after the meeting if you're unsatisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody additionally on my left? Sir over there?
I'd like to ask about the trees that was in this letter that this lady sent to you guys today.
Please step up to the podium, sir.
About the trees that was in her letter that was sent to you guys today?
Sir.
Yes.
Your name, please.
Oh, my name, Chuck Elliott Lawson. Charles.
Hi, Charles.
Hi. How are you?
Now, please, what is your concern?
Well, I had seen the letter that she had sent to you guys today. I seen the email, and it was talking about if you guys cut down trees in the city of Westland, then you're supposed to be planting them somewhere else.
Regarding the trees, Westland has had a tree ordinance. This was actually covered last month, so this is not new. I'm going to cut you short so that I can move this along. The tree ordinance matched that of Canton. Canton's tree ordinance was deemed unconstitutional.
Okay.
The current tree ordinance that we have on the books doesn't work, and we'll get the city sued really, really big time and get a lot of people fired, as happened in Canton. So currently...
You can stop. I remember that.
The administration can probably speak to this better than I can. However, as I understand it, we currently have kind of an honor system going on with our developers. We can't tell them what to do with their trees, but we can really say, you know, we'd really like you to do it. And as I understand it, that's the best version of our tree policy that we can actually enforce.
Okay. I remember you guys talking about it now from last month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody additionally on my right? I see a lady back there. Please rise, be recognized.
I'm Zina West. I also am by the abbey. I'm the corner lot that it will be facing, and my concern was the trees. That if I, if it's going to come all the way back to my property, which used to grindstone had, I understand you might have purchased some of that?
The grindstone is not part of this conversation.
Okay, then it's not going to affect me. I didn't know how far back it was going to come, so you answered it. Thank you.
And as is the purpose of this conversation, they're very concerned about trees. Please do a good job on re-arboring. Sir, please, rise and be recognized.
Yes, my name is Jack Smiley. I'm with the Michigan Land Conservancy, and we own the property on the south side of Marquette, immediately opposite of this development. I'm very disappointed to see such a major development take away that nice forest there. I know the Westland officials over the years, through different adopted master plans, have expressed a desire to protect forests and wetlands, but I really don't see any evidence that's ever come to fruition. And I would wish that there would be more attention to protecting our forest and wetland areas. And while you may not be able to regulate some of those, I also noted that under the National Wetland Inventory, that a large portion of this property was designated as forested wetlands. So my question would be, what tree species were identified on the property, and were those wetland-dependent species? Because that would impact whether it was a regulated wetland or under state law. And I don't know if you have any independent people that are able to look at that, but wetlands do not mean there's water at the surface. It could be near the surface that it would impact the vegetation. And there's been a number of cases where inappropriate development was stopped because of the wetlands. So I wish you would at least take a further look at that. And also, I noticed in the, one of the diagrams, there is retention pond planned for along Marquette. If at all possible, I would like to see that removed and just have a vegetative buffer along Marquette. It'd be nice to screen this development as much as possible, and there's some really nice trees there, and it'd be a shame to see them all gone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody additionally on my right? I was recognizing the gentleman on the right in the back. Please rise to the podium, be recognized.
My name is Jerry Asher. I live on Traditions Drive. And the high-pressure gas line, from my understanding, is you can put a driveway over it, you can put a railroad over it, you just cannot build a building over it. Is that correct?
The civil engineer's shaking her head no.
Do you want me to speak real quick?
Not directly. This is the citizens' time. You will have your time. It'll be later. Please, if you want to speak on this directly, just note it down and speak to the gentleman's concern.
Also, there's a 50-foot setback from the Campus Drive to the building. Couldn't they put a driveway to come down alongside that building? And that way, the fire department would be able to get all the way around. And that way, the fire department would be able to get all the way around. They would not need the entrance on Traditions at all.
That would cut into the retention pond.
And the landscaping.
Pardon? That would cut into the retention pond and the landscaping.
Cut into what?
The retention pond and the landscaping.
The retention pond?
The engineering, sir.
No.
They can't put that retention pond over the, over the high-pressure gas line.
But you could put the driveway over it.
As I said, the civil engineer over there is shaking her head no. As I understand it, the setback is, is in reference to the footprint of the site plan, not just the building.
Also, I'm under the understanding that the berm was denied?
I don't understand what you're asking there.
I was, I've got an email saying that the berm was denied. It was requesting a berm alongside Traditions, and it was denied. I just wondered why.
As I've been informed very recently in study session, the current landscaping is, has foliage proposed that's well in excess of the zoning requirement for arborage in screen.
Thank you for your time.
There is no berm being proposed. There is no berm required. I think some of the residents had requested a berm. It is true that the landscaping plan provides landscaping in excess of the zoning ordinance requirements.
In your commentary, when you come back up, please mention the screening. Anybody additionally on my left? Anybody additionally on my right? All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring the gentleman and the nice lady up to the podium to address the additional concerns of the citizens.
All right, I'll try to hit as many as I can, and Julie will hit anything that I've missed.
Before I turn it over to you, I have a note that, from one of our members up here, that makes it, makes the statement, if I read it correctly, that there's both regulated and unregulated wetlands, and this particular property is unregulated wetlands. Please.
Thank you. All right, the north drive that is remaining to be used for fire department access, we hope that driveway never gets used because it would get used if there was indeed a fire or a thought of a fire. Ambulances will not be using that. They will be coming in off of the Marquette entrance and either servicing under the canopy at the front of the building, at the port of cachere, or in unfortunate situations, the back of the house through the service court area, but will not be using the gated driveway. The type of gate is not just the type where somebody comes and can push a button and make it go up and down, because then anybody would be able to use it. It still hasn't been worked out specifically with the fire department, but it might have a Knox box with the key in it. It could have a code, a fob, something that's special to be used that can't be used by the general public or even any of the other people who utilize the facility. We hope that that gate doesn't get broken or busted, that anybody doesn't get upset, but if it does, and we find out who, hopefully they'll be the ones paying for it. But the intent is to have that gate there in perpetuity. I mean, that's what we're offering, and that's what we're hoping will be the case. One of the other reasons about the setback also on the west side of the building, the 50-foot setback is actually more than triple what's required by your zoning code, so we're far exceeding that. And as Mr. Aiyub said, it's very well landscaped. The reason, another reason not being able to push it back is needing the fire department to have access on the west side of the property, and they can still service it off of Campus Drive on the west side if need be. If we were, it, it, it's, there's no good planning purpose to put an additional driveway on the west side. A, we would lose all of that landscaping that we're putting in, and B, while we never hope to use it, half of Campus Drive is actually on our property. That road was put in to provide access for the properties on both sides of the street. There's access easements there. So while we're never planning on having to use it, it's there, God forbid, if the fire department needs to have access to it. The screening, as mentioned, putting a berm in that area based on the grades of the property and being able to get the water out, berms there would not be good from a grading standpoint in trying to help the water flow in order to drain the property. It's even the reason why we have two detention ponds, one in the front and one in the back, is how the site is graded and the flatness and the existing contours and what's able to be done in order to get it off. And Julie can talk about that in more detail if there are more questions. We did have a very detailed tree survey done of this property. I'm telling you, if you want to see it, you ask Mr. Aiyub. If you're having trouble sleeping at night, you can take a look at that. But it definitely goes through, I don't say hundreds, there's probably thousands of trees that were noted, and to my understanding, none of them fall into a forested wetland-regulated species.
Did I miss anything, or is there anything else that you have on your list?
I just have the pipeline.
Okay.
Couple things.
All right.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Julie Townsend with Raisinga.
Hi, Julie.
I just had a couple other comments on this, too. As far as the...
Julie, before you continue, do I understand correctly that you're a civil engineer?
I am a civil engineer, yes.
Thank you very much.
Just a couple things. As you mentioned, with trying to move the property to, or the building to the east, there is a ditch, it shows up on the site plan of that, just to the east of our parking lot, too. It's kind of unknown. I reached out to the county. It's not part of the county drain system, but there is an existing ditch over to the side there. We've decided to, you know, amongst the other things with the, or the pipeline and everything, just to stay away from that ditch. It's a little bit of an unknown, and we're just not going to alter that or change that either. So that would be part of the reason why we wouldn't want to move it to the east either, staying away from that pipeline. And a little bit more on the pipeline. I did meet with an official from the pipeline out there the day of the last planning commission meeting, and we went over different options, because it is a bit of a challenge from the civil engineering side, too, to run the sanitary sewer. I know we haven't talked about that yet. So we've, I've had lots of conversations with the pipeline people on different options and how we're doing everything, because basically, the pipeline, what it is, is obviously, it goes underneath Wayne, it goes underneath Marquette, but they have it encased, and it's a lot deeper. It's like seven foot to the top of the encasement out there by Wayne, whereas through the property, it's maybe four foot down and not encased. So it all depends on if it's encased or it's not encased, if you can run a road over or not through, or a driveway. Through the property, it is not encased, in this case. So they will not allow any driveways over. No buildings, no nothing. You have to maintain that, and they do have the authority to deny any driveways or any development in that way, as it would impact their pipeline. So, yeah, it's a challenge even to try to run a sanitary sewer underneath it or to connect near it. So it's a challenge with that. So no driveways are possible, and it didn't work with the berm on the engineering. The property is quite flat relatively, draining about half of it to the north and half of it to the south to the different detention areas, and those won't hold water on a full-time basis. So I think that encompassed everything between...
Fantastic. We may, depending on who needs to, but get one question answered up here, we may call you back.
Okay, cool. Bring it.
Opening it up to the commissioner. I'll start down at the end with Commissioner Durante.
I'm good with all what's been said.
Fantastic. Coming over here to Commissioner Swokis.
I'm good.
Returning over there to Commissioner Rounds.
I'm good.
Commissioner House.
I'm also good, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Stashow?
I just have one question from the chair to the petitioner. I know we're having a nice sturdy gate security. Is there any chance of maybe even having some type of signage that, in case somebody does drive around, whether it be going, trying to approach the gate, going in, or coming out, whatever the case is, even though they're not going to be using it? Maybe there could be some type of signage that says, you know, private gate, or, or something of that nature, don't enter, do not enter, whatever. I don't know if that would be plausible or not.
It's definitely plausible. We've actually done more so on the property side, where at the starting point, where you would end up having to go one way, where it would say something like emergency access only, do not enter, something along that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, very plausible.
All right, thank you very much.
And then to your question. Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes, I have a question for the petitioner. Since you're going to be sharing access to Campus Drive, I think some of the concerns from the citizens were the amount of money that they use to upkeep it. Were you be sharing that responsibility?
So first of all, we're actually not sharing access because we are not using that road. We have taken everything away and used Marquette for staff, visitor, delivery. In the rare instance, or rare instance, the hopefully never instance would just be a fire truck would be the only thing that would be on that road, and if that is, there's much bigger concerns. But all I can say is, it's obviously something between my client to work out with the homeowners' association on how that's going to be handled. It's, it's nothing that I can comment on. It's really a legal thing that they will have to come to an agreement on, but with the understanding that everyone realizes is that it's not a shared access. That's what it was put in for, and that's what we originally had proposed, but based on the request to not use that road, we are creating our own entrance and access into that now. Hopefully, that answers the...
It kind of did, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Hopkins? Recognizing Ruby Richards.
Well, my question was going to be who is going to be responsible for opening the gate in an emergency, but you already answered that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Normally, I don't like to comment, but I feel that there are a few things that I should clarify. So if I could please have the civil engineer return to the podium. I personally, I'm very concerned about this high-pressure gas line, maybe outwardly so. What are the risks involved in relocating the floor plan, the floor plan or the site plan closer to the, to the, to the pipeline? Is it even legally possible?
Well, it varies a little bit because it runs diagonally, it's kind of challenging on the site. There are more restrictions down on the south side by Marquette, because it's going to be the closest to it, and lesser up in that area as it goes to the northeast. They have a lot of concerns with that, like they will be out there monitoring construction just to make sure that, you know, there's no backhoe digging out there where it's not supposed to be. They were out there monitoring us when we were doing soil borings and such, so they monitored that heavily. Once it's in place, it's just like it is today, but when there is construction activities, they heavily monitor when you're, when you're in their vicinity.
Is there a risk of explosion?
That's the reason they're there, is to make sure that that is minimized and nothing, yes.
Okay. And from a civil engineering standpoint, are you satisfied that the, that the site plan is moved as far over to the, I'm really bad with my northwest, east, south, over to the, to the right as far as it can possibly get?
Yes, if we try to move it east, you have to make other concessions on things. It would have to be more of a, it would have to be greatly altered. I have concerns about getting it too close to that ditch, as I mentioned earlier. That's kind of an unknown. It's not recognized as part of the county drain system, but yet it is a ditch out there that drains there. I lean towards leaving that alone. If we moved it...
I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you, and I really don't mean to be rude here. When you say that you, that you want to leave that alone, that's, that's a precautionary measure so that you wouldn't disrupt the, as much as possible disrupt what people have come to expect as far as normal drainage that currently exists?
I would look, I would study it more to find out if we need to provide something else to, like relocate it, to make sure we provide that drainage. It's not natural, obviously, it's a ditch, it's man-made, but it's serving a purpose, so I wouldn't want to just fill it in.
Well, our neighbors are concerned about disruption to what they've become accustomed to.
Right.
And I guess my question, my line of questioning is to, to kind of address their concerns, one, and also, two, to make it pretty clear that you and this developer are trying to obviously develop the property, but also trying to look out for their, their safety and well-being as well while you're, while you're trying to do what you're doing.
Correct.
Is that a fair statement to say?
Yes, and to balance everything. We want to be good neighbors. We absolutely do. There are so many other compromises to try to move it east to the site. You'd have to run the driveway down in there between campus and the building, and my understanding was the concerns is they don't want traffic over there by campus, so you'd just be moving some of your traffic over a little bit. We wouldn't give them as much landscaping and the buffer and the barrier there. They would have just a driveway moved over a little bit with cars going back and forth. So, and that totally eliminates the possibility of a berm or anything. It interferes with some of the grading. Yeah, in a balance of everything. And then as far as the trees, you would have to move it over, take out more trees, fit that driveway in. So more trees come down, too. It's a huge balancing act. So could it, could it be moved to the east a little bit more? Yeah, probably, but are you willing to make the other compromises on what it would do, you know, to take down more trees, to do more things? Because basically, that area, in that triangular area, that stays trees and wooded, that's pretty much undevelopable over there. And it can only, it would only be able to go over a little bit anyways for the compromises that we would have to make otherwise.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yep.
As I, as I said to Ms. Dorshe, I'm going to try to stay a little bit after the meeting. If anybody has the, has the endurance to stick around to the end of our agenda, I'd be happy to discuss the matter as much as I'm capable. I am trained as a, as an environmental attorney. I am a little bit of a resource, and I also know how these, how these matters are handled. If we were to, if we were to deny on reasons that aren't legitimate, things would be very bad. Certainly, the developers made a number of, a number of concessions that legally, he's not obliged to do, and if he had to force the issue legally, he would be under no obligation to, to make those accommodations. And we do, we do appreciate you, sir. So, that being said, a motion is in order.
I'll make the motion.
I believe Mr. Swokis wished to be recognized for that motion.
Do I need to close any kind of a public hearing since we...
Yes, there is a public hearing currently in effect.
Okay. I move that we close the public hearing, waive the normal rules. Case 1707J, proposed site plan and special land use approval for nursing and rehabilitation center, Wayne Road, north side of Marquette, west of Wayne, and send it on to the city council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and making special note of all of the extra... and recommendations, and making special note of all of the extra time that the developer and the Abbey's residents took to, to work this out, and so moved.
A second.
By Swokas, support by Rounds, roll call please.
This is a roll call vote to approve case number 1707J. Duranti?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Swokas?
Yes.
Rapport?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you very much. To the, to the, to the citizens here in attendance, please note that this is a recommendation to the city council. This matter will go to the city council, and you do have an additional option to have your, all your voices heard there. I very much appreciate and am, am very humbled by the amount of cooperation and understanding you've all shown today. I, I have to admit, I was a little concerned that, that we were going to have a little bit of a circus here today, and I'm very, very impressed and very pleased with everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, moving on to our next item on the agenda, into new business. Case number 1453H, propose special land use approval for a church. Administration, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The four acre subject property is zone CB2 Shopping Center Commercial Business District, highlighted or outlined in yellow on your screen. It contains a 24,000 square foot retail plaza. The petitioner tonight is requesting special land use approval to operate a church in one of the approximately 4,000 square foot vacant spaces. That space is highlighted in red on your screen. Religious institutions, as you know, are classified as special land uses in the CB2 district, and therefore the petitioner again is seeking special land use approval tonight. There are no modifications being proposed to the existing plaza as it relates to access, parking, height of the building setbacks, things like that. The parcel contains access from Vanoy Road and Cherry Hill, and there are 186 parking spaces existing in accordance with the previously approved site plan. The hours of, of operation as indicated by, was it the past, Tony Perry, the petitioner, are Tuesday, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, Wednesday, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM, and Sunday, 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM. The 2018 future land use designation for this property is neighborhood commercial slash office services. We believe that this use is consistent with that designation, and therefore the administration and planning department are recommending approval of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Tony Perry in the audience? Tony, please rise to the, to the podium.
If I may speak on behalf of Pastor Perry here, David James, on behalf of.
Mr. James, thank you very much. Did you have anything to add to the, to the presentation by the administration?
Just the fact, nice job, just the fact that he does a very good job, and it's quite an attribute for our community for his services there.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's nice to have a good, you know, a good case number that isn't, you know, in front of a judge, so I just want to say. I grew up in the city of Westland, so I just have a, a passion for the city of Westland because there was a moment when I was in front of the Westland, but it wasn't, it wasn't you, it was a judge. So today I just like to give back to the community as much as I can. I've been doing it for about 10 and a half years in the community, doing outreach in Norwayne, and a community that I once ruined, I'm just trying to help build back up, that's all.
Well, that's very nice. I'm going to have you take a seat. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to ask for participation from the, from the audience. If there's anybody on my right wishes to speak on this matter, please, sir.
I'm Mark Clark, and I've been friends with Tony for a long time, and, you know, a lot of people's lives have been changed with the drinking, the drugs, and, and families restored, and I just want to say this is a positive thing for the community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody on my left wish to speak on this matter? Anybody additionally on my right? Hearing none, sir. If I can have you come back up to the podium, we're going to open it up to the, to the Commission, is there anybody on my right wish to speak on this matter? Recognizing Dana Stachow.
Yes, I'll just only say best to you, and God bless you for bringing such a wonderful, yeah, a church to this area.
Thank you, thank you. I do work with Paul Mots and spoke with the kids for over the years, so good friends with the community.
Thank you, Dana. Anybody on my right? Seeing none, anybody on my left? Seeing none, motion is in order?
So moved.
I'm, I'm afraid that's, that's.
Right, just so you recognize me. Well, just so you recognize.
Recognizing David Swokas.
I move that we waive the normal rules, close the hearing. Case number 1453H, special land use approval for a church in Fellowship Hall, 220 and 230 South Vanoy, west side of Vanoy, south of Cherry Hill, and send it on to the city council with a recommendation for approval and subject to departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Motion by Swokas, support by Richards. Roll call please.
This is roll call, vote to approve case number 1453H. Duranti?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
A big yes.
Yes.
Okay, Statchow?
Yes.
Swokas?
Yes.
Rapport?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
All right, sir, your motion's been approved. The next step is going before the city council. Check with the administration, they'll get you hooked up with next steps. Thank you so much. Good luck to you, sir. Moving on to item number two on our agenda for new business. Case number 2274, propose site plan and special land use approval for a Dunkin' Donuts, Dunky's, drive-through restaurant. Administration, please.
Okay, thank you. Subject property is approximately 27,000 square feet. It's zone CB3 general commercial business. The site contains an existing building formerly occupied by Ruth Olson Photography. The petitioner is requesting site plan and special land use approval to demolish the existing building and construct a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts. My understanding is that this is a relocation of the existing Dunkin' Donuts about a block away to the west at 34417 Ford Road. This is to accommodate a drive-through operation which is not existing at the existing location and for additional parking areas. The hours of operation are proposed from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. Adjacent land use and zoning property to the north is zone R2 Single Family Residential and developed by Cadillac Memorial Garden Cemetery. Properties to the south are, property to the south rather is located in the city of Garden City and is the site of the former Radcliffe Center, now Garden City's Recreation Center. Property to the west is zone CB1 Low Intensity Commercial Business and is developed by the Thrifty Florist. I did receive a call from them, just a general inquiry, wanting to see the site plan. No concerns, as I remember, that were pointed out at that, during that phone call. Properties to the east, property to the east is zone CB1 Low Intensity Commercial Business and developed by Child Care Center. The site will be accessed by an existing one full service driveway at Ford Road. The site complies with the parking and stacking requirements for a drive-through restaurant as required by the Westland zoning ordinance. In regards to landscaping and screening this development, a six-foot tall masonry screening wall is proposed along the south side of the site to screen the site from the adjacent Garden City Community Center. Landscaping is proposed throughout the site exceeding minimum requirements along Ford Road and throughout the parking areas. There is landscaping plan in your backup. There's also an ornamental three-foot tall fence with piers along the, the Ford Road right of way. You see these in the Ford Road overlay district to the west of the site down Ford Road. The new building is constructed primarily using fiber cement paneling and metal for accent material. All of the bulk requirements for a building are being complied with in the CB3 district. The proposed use, we believe, is consistent with the future land use designation of neighborhood commercial and office services. The proposed drive-through restaurant is located along Ford Road, within the Ford Road corridor, which is efficient capacity to handle the drive-through traffic. There are also a number of drive-throughs that you may know in, in the area coexisting without any big negative impacts on the existing roadway. The site plan was accompanied by a traffic impact study that was provided to you in whole. This traffic study was conducted by a certified traffic engineer. The study examined potential traffic impacts along the roadways and throughout the site and found no significant impact on traffic operations. The administration and planning department are recommending approval of this petition and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, administration. Is the petitioner in the audience? Please rise to the podium. You, Ms. Andrea Bader?
Andrea Bader, yep, with Jeffrey Scott.
Hi Andrea.
Hi.
Do you have anything that you can, that you'd like to add to the, to the presentation?
No, he did a very good job.
He, he does a very good job. He could speak a little louder sometimes, though.
Really?
I heard him.
Yeah, right under the bus. At this, this is a, a special land use, so I'm going to have you take a nearby seat. We'll bring you back up when the, when we open it up to the, to the commission. But at this time, if there's anybody that would like to speak on the matter of a Dunkin' Donuts, on my right, please rise to the podium. Seeing a nice lady in the back.
We actually come down here to pay attention to the senior citizen place going on. Excuse me, I have a cold that I'm getting over.
Remind me your name, please?
Oh, sorry, Kimberly Abraham.
Hi, Kimberly.
I live in the Tonkwish neighborhood, and you guys are allowing a car wash to go here. Dunkin' Donuts already exists right there at Wildwood. It's only moving down a couple of buildings. That's great, but it's not when you're trying to get out of your neighborhood. And now you have a drive-through going through with all the other drive-throughs going there. I want the business in Westland, but what about all the traffic that's keeping us locked in here? You put the, the, what is that? Oil change place on Vanoy, and then you put, the car wash is going to go in right there at the end of my street, and then now Dunkin' Donuts is going to move from here, having traffic going here on Ford Road. It's already congested through there. It already gets backed up through there. What about the people that live there trying to get in and out of their neighborhoods? What about us? And we actually came here to pay attention to what was happening over on Marquette Street, and I just now found out about this because I haven't been paying attention. We shouldn't have to pay attention. We trust you guys to take care of us. And I just, what about everybody, the families that just left here going, what about our neighborhoods? How are we hitting in? How are we hitting out? Build things up, but pay attention to that, too. Wildlife doesn't matter, but it does, especially when I have a dog in my backyard that is being tempted by coyotes coming up in my neighbor's yard due to the trees being cut down in the area, deer getting hit, you guys leaving them lay when you do get calls. So all of that does matter. It matters to me as a human being. Maybe not to you guys, and I don't, I don't know what the fix is, but you're taking down trees, you're taking and moving a building from here three doors down. What's going to happen to that building? Just empty again? That's not good either. The Olson Studio thing being empty is not a good thing. Traffic, I, I don't know. So just keep everybody in mind, wildlife, humans, traffic, just everything in general. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Administration responding directly with pretty much all of our proposals. We do a traffic study, is that correct?
No, traffic impact studies by a professional, by a certified traffic engineer are done for drive-through restaurants and for major developments where the planning commission requests one. You do have the authority to request one. There was one provided here because it's a drive-through restaurant. To answer your question.
But a, a, a traffic impact study was conducted for this proposal?
Correct, sir, yes.
And it, it did not reveal any, any significant impact to, additional impact to traffic?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very minimal, I should say.
Thank you very much. I mean, there is always going to be some impact, correct? I understand. Anybody wish to speak on this matter on my, on my left? Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none, ma'am. If I could please have you retake the podium. And if, opening it up to the, to the commission, anybody on my right wish to speak? Anybody on my left wish to speak? I see two. We're going to recognize Ms. Hobbs first.
I just had a quick question. I did look at the traffic study and read them, and in the traffic study it was stated that there would be, I think, 11 spots for queuing for the cars, and then in the write-up it said eight. So, and the estimated number of cars at like heavy traffic times would be 10, so I just wanted to make sure there is room for at least 10 cars in the queues, but they're not going out into the street.
There is. We have one, two, eight is the word for it. Seven, eight, nine, 10. There's 10 before it even gets to the parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody additionally on my right? Returning to my left, recognizing David Swokas.
Just a question through the chair to the petitioner. Do you own the current building that the Dunkin' Donuts is?
I do believe he does not own the current building.
Okay. So through the chair to administration, is there any plans for that, or will it sit vacant, or will they tear it down, or?
There are no plans. I don't know what the private market holds for that building. My guess is, is that it will be either redeveloped or, or re-occupied.
Is that something maybe we can send over to economic development, to Director Garza, and have them take a look at it just from the standpoint for the residents to say, okay, we don't have another building just sitting here vacant, you know, since he has a, a retention department person that could maybe put it out there and try to, you know, do some highlighting of it or just recommending it to that?
Yeah, we can tell Director Garza and Brendan Schroder from his department.
Okay, that's good for me.
I'm good.
Recognizing Ruby Richards.
My question is about the Olsons because I see that as still in business. How soon are you planning on putting, putting this Dunkin' Donuts up?
As soon as we can get it going.
So what about the people that are at Olsons? Because I went there today and I seen a lot of cars in the parking lot.
I have no idea what the, what their plans are for them.
Thank you.
So with the new location, is there going to be plenty of blueberry muffins all the time?
I believe so, yes.
All right, all right. All right, with that, the motion is in order. Recognizing Ruby Richards for the motion.
Yes, I move to close out and waive normal rules for case number 2274, propose site plan and special land use approval for Dunkin' Donuts drive-through restaurant at 34215 Ford Road, east of Wildwood Road, and send to city council for recommendation for approval.
Motion by Richards, support by Swokas. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to your representative rule, case number 2274. Duranti?
Yes.
Falls? I'm sorry, Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Swokas?
Yes.
Rapport?
Yes. Motion passes. Ma'am, just see the administration for next, for next steps. Good luck at the city council level.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number, to our third item on the agenda, that's case number 1608A, propose site plan approval for pet cremato- proposed site plan approval for pet crematorium. This is a special land use. Administration?
Thank you, chairman. Not sure what's going on with my light, but it's probably needful, you guys. The subject property is zoned I-1 light industrial and includes a single-story 4,600-square-foot industrial building. The subject property is located in an industrial park surrounded by both industrial zoning and industrial uses. The petitioner is seeking special land use approval to retrofit the building for a pet cremation facility. The hours of operation are unknown at this time. I think I forgot to ask the petitioner. So if they do know, please note that on the record. There are no modifications being proposed to the existing site or the building from the exterior. The parcel was previously developed by the existing industrial building. The parcel contains access from Florence and existing parking is in accordance with the previously approved site plan. The future land use designation for the site is industrial. Crematoriums are only permitted in the industrial districts as special land uses. The administration and planning department recommend that this be forwarded with a recommendation for approval. The floor plan is located in your backup and on the screen here. I just want to note for the record that we did sit down with the building official and also sent this to the fire department specifically looking at the ventilation and the ovens and all of that stuff. And they have, in concept, signed off on it pending planning commission and city council review. Thank you.
Thank you very much, administration. Is the petitioner in the audience? Please rise to the podium. Ms. Green, I assume?
Noni Green, local veterinarian.
Is there anything that you would like to add to the presentation of the administration?
Only to say that at present, there's just going to be one oven. And it is an electric oven, which will be new to Michigan and really to the United States. It's, and the technology is being used widespread in Europe. And so it really is kind of novel, but also environmentally sound because you don't actually use fossil fuels to get your flame. And so it's electric, and so it's cleaner and safe.
Thank you very, very much. If you could find a nearby seat. This is a special land use, so it's a public hearing. I'll be surveying the, the audience, and then we'll bring you back up when the, when I open it up to the, to the administration. Is there anybody in the audience that would wish to, to speak to this matter on my right? Anybody wish to speak on this matter on my left? Ms. Green, can you please retake the podium? And we will open it up to the administration, or, sorry, we will open it up to the, to the board. Anybody on my right wish to question the petitioner? Anybody on my left wish, recognizing David Swokas.
Just a question from my mind, because I have had a pet cremated, and then I also have some that are in the local cemetery, in the pet cemetery. How hot does the, what's the difference in temperature between the gas ovens and the electric? Because I'm just thinking, electric, do you really have to turn it up? Is that like a huge draw on your power or, you know?
So if you operate eight hours a day, roughly the kilowatt-hours are equivalent to if you were to plug it to EV every day for a year, roughly, times by, I think, three. So it's not a big draw on electricity. In terms of the heat, I think it's 1,386 degrees Fahrenheit is what the oven operates at. And that is so that you can remove all of the particulate matter. And so what ends up coming out of the stack is just carbon dioxide and water.
So, and then, so am I to understand you are, you receive business like from local veterinarians all over to do the crematory services?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So the primary client will be the veterinarian, with some to the public. I'm guessing it'll be 90% veterinarian and 10% public.
And the other question I would have is, do the, like, who you receive the business from? Do they do the draining of the fluid from the animals and things like that?
So there is no draining of the fluid. We would take the body in bags that are actually kind of waterproof. We would provide them to the veterinarian. And so we would bring them, and there'd be some cooling, cooling places. And then you just put the bag, which is waterproof, and the pet into the crematorium, crematorium, sorry, nervous, into the oven.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Recognizing Ruby, recognizing Ruby Richards.
Is this going to be your first crematory?
It is, yes.
It is. So you know a lot about them, though, right?
Well, I know enough. And there is a governing body, the IAOPCC, that helps us, the new business. They're really a good resource. If you run any trouble, plus the manufacturer.
Okay, so will you be on your?
And then there's, sorry, one more, one more thing. There is one person who does operate a crematorium in the area for humans that is going to be assisting us in the endeavor and lending her expertise.
Okay. Well, is it certain animals you can't cremate?
I think there's a weight limit, 220 pounds.
220 pounds.
Yeah, so anything above that. But my primary would be dogs and cats, which is my primary client.
And how many pets per year do you expect to cremate?
If we grow the business, I'm hoping 5,000 cremations a year.
Okay. Okay. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Anybody additionally on my left? Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none? I had one question.
Yes.
So much like Mr. Swokas, I have had a pet cremated, and they were, they were entombed at a pet cemetery. Do you have a connection with a pet cemetery that you'll be, that you'll be patroning?
There's very few. There's Whispering Pines, but they already have someone. There is a human facility that I know the owner of, like a human cemetery, that I'm probably, I wouldn't be doing any pet crem, cemeteries. But for the ashes that we have for the general cremation, our goal is to bury them. And so we would probably be purchasing a plot from a human cemetery on the side in order to put the ashes there. And this is just be for general cremation for the people who don't actually want the ashes back.
So you would not be servicing?
The cemetery aspect?
The cemetery aspect?
No, no.
That's already being handled by the, by the existing business?
Yeah, there's some existing cemeteries that handle that business, yes.
Okay.
So we would not be having that.
Thank you very much. With that, a motion is in order. Recognizing Daryl Rounds for that motion.
I move to close the public hearing and waive the normal rules. And that case number 1608A, proposed site plan approval for pet crematorium located at 38092 Abruzzi Drive, northeast corner of Hicks and Marquette, be forwarded to city council for approval based upon or contingent upon departmental requirements or recommendations.
Motion by Round, support by Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve case number 1608A. Duranti.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Swokas.
Yes.
And Rappaport.
Yes. Motion passes. You can see the administration for next steps. Good luck at the, at the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four on the agenda, that's case number 1055C, proposed conditional rezoning from R3 mixed residential district to I-1 light industrial district. This is a public hearing. Administration?
Thank you, chairman. The subject parcels are currently zoned R3 mixed residential and remain undeveloped. The subject parcels are the two rectangles highlighted, or I'm sorry, outlined in yellow. Together, they total approximately an acre in size. The petitioner is requesting rezoning from R3 to I-1, that's our light industrial district, to expand the parking area for best way expediting. That's a transportation and logistics company located at the larger outlined yellow area. This is 38272 Abruzzi. If approved, the petitioner will seek site plan approval to pave the parcels for truck and trailer parking. Some adjacent land uses and zoning. Property to the north would be this. This is zoned R3 mixed residential, and it is undeveloped. Originally, this was floated, well, currently owned by the petitioner and floated as part of this rezoning. But as a result of, to create a buffer between this residence here, the petitioner decided to leave this as wooded and undeveloped. Property to the east is zoned R3 mixed residential and developed by a single-family dwelling located up here. The area adjacent, however, is fully wooded and undeveloped. But again, part of this residence up here. Property to the south is I-1 light industrial. This is the location of the business of the petitioner right here. And then properties to the west are zoned R3 mixed residential, this property over here. And then this is I-1 light industrial, part of the parking lot for this industrial business over here. The properties are located between a residential district, as mentioned, and in the industrial park there to the south. They are both landlocked from the residential area, making development under the R3 mixed residential district regulations challenging. The 2018 city of Westland master, master plan feature land use designation for these two properties is single-family residential. The condition for rezoning is if the rezoning is approved and the site plan is denied, then the zoning of these two properties will revert back to R3 mixed residential district. Happy to discuss that further. The administration and planning department are recommending approval. This is the zoning map of the two areas right now and everything around it. The yellow is residential. X marks the spot of the subject properties. And blue is industrial.
Thank you very much. This is, oh, I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you. This is a rendering of not only the existing business, which is over here, but also those two lots that are being proposed for truck and trailer parking. And another view here. And that's just looking into the industrial subdivision there. That's all I got. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, administration. Is the petitioner in the audience?
Yes, sir.
The petitioner could please rise to the, to the podium? Do you have anything to, to add to the, to the presentation of the administration?
No, I'll summarize everything.
Thank you very much. This is a, this is a public hearing, so I am going to ask you to, to find a seat very nearby the, very nearby the podium. I'm going to address the, the citizens, and then I'm going to bring you back up when the, when we turn it over to the board.
No problem.
Thank you very much. If there is anybody in the audience that wish to speak on this matter, on my right? Seeing none? Oh, one, there you go. Come on up. Please rise to the podium and be recognized.
My name's Ray Gibson. I own the adjacent lot to the one that is not being requested. So I would be at the very north end of that drawing. So my question is, this is going to be used for tractor and trailer parking. Tractor referring to 18-wheelers. And this has to be cemented, obviously. Where's the runoff from this parking lot going to go? Is that going to flood me out up there? That's already a wetlands to begin with, and the drainage is very, very poor. My sump pump runs continuous. It's like living on an artesian whale. So it's already a very high water table. And I'm concerned about where the runoff from this cement is going to go to.
Would the administration care to, care to comment?
Sure. Before I do that, can I please have your address?
38031 Hickford.
Thank you. We're, we're reviewing a rezoning case that changes the classification of the property and what an owner can do with the property, in this case, from residential to industrial. If this is approved, the petitioner will go through the site plan approval process to develop the site. In Westland, we do require paving for parking surfaces. And in Wayne County, the county requires stormwater drainage systems to be installed on surfaces that are paved. So that will come, if approved, at a later time. And you will have the opportunity to come back through the notification process.
So this is too early in the process to get an answer as to where this water's going to go? It will be approached at a later time if you guys approve this?
Yeah, I think it's good to have this dialogue with you, but, but you're right, that this comes at a later time.
Okay, well, the rest of the questions I got, I'll leave to another time, Natalie.
Before we move on, I, I did want to ask the administration while I, while I have the administration's attention. Is it normal for, for site plans to require stormwater be retained on-site as a current? I'm sure that there are, there are legacy existing properties that do not have that requirement. But now, would this, would a new site plan have the, the current requirement for retaining water on their, on their property?
Yeah, existing developments that don't have stormwater in accordance with existing regulations, obviously are grandfathered in. There's also an exemption at Wayne County for half, under half an acre. But since this is a site that is associated with a site that's going to be larger than that, there are mechanisms in place for us to, to implement those requirements. And I, and I think we will want to. So to answer your question.
I, I don't think that's a complete answer, sir, but I, hopefully that, that leaves you less disappointed.
Close enough.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody on my, is there anybody on my, on my left wish to speak on this matter? Anybody additionally on my right? Sir, please rise to the podium, be recognized.
Hello, guys. Good evening. My name's Nova, last name Tucker. I own the two-acre parcel there, that's the long one, next to the two acres, or next to the two half-acre parcels. Me and my wife also own to the northeast of that, the last house on Hickford, that property as well, which is an acre. I have a couple of questions. I know that we've mentioned this is a zoning hearing, right? Not a plant hearing. You did scroll through some plans that look like there's already been plans submitted or, or suggested. So those are just renderings for somebody, that's cool. I guess my, so, sitting here listening is the first time I've ever been in a setting like this. The citizens over here have given me a lot to think about, and now I realize I'm gratefully unprepared for this meeting. They have a lot of information. So I would ask if there is somebody that we can speak with to get the proper, the proper officials to talk to about all of those concerns we have. As a residential property owner on that site, all of those are very valid concerns. We have, we have concerns of, of wetlands. There's currently about three feet of water back there. There's currently ducks, geese, mallards, everything that sits back there right now. This is going to destroy that. Water runoff, there's three feet of water back there, guys. It's going somewhere. If you go back, can you go back to the other one? The gentleman on the end of the street of, end of Marquette, same situation, right? That water's going to go there. He does, he owns the other one acre that's on the south side of my other acre. So the other parcel that's not there, correct. Also, I'd like to ask a question. You have the, the trucking company outlined as the yellow. Am I mistaken that that property to the south is not also the trucking company?
The yellow highlighted areas are the subject property, the subject, the subject lots.
Okay.
That, that company might exist in other lots as well, but this is That company might exist in other lots as well, but this is the one that's before us.
Okay, so, the property south of that is also his property, as those somewhat trucks obviously span both.
That is, that's neither information that we know.
So, we're expanding that property. So, is there also going to be a, what do you guys call it, traffic survey ran? Because right now, we have a lot of trucks on that corner. There's kids sitting on that corner every day, waiting for buses. Those trucks have to make very large turns at Ford and Hicks. I have to back up every single day to make sure that they don't hit me in the turning lane, so like, I know there's a lot to come. I guess what I'm saying is that I'd like to save the potential investment or time, save them a lot of time and anguish and money moving forward, if these are things that are going to be, not go through. The last thing I had to say is that when I purchased that property, as well as the other property, I had gone down to the Wayne County Clerks. Those properties were previously owned by Detroit Land Bank. I spoke with them. I gave them an offer for those properties. They said, Mr. and Mrs. Tucker, you guys don't even have to give an offer. There is no way that that property can be bought without you guys' acknowledgement and notification of that property being bought, as you landlocked that property. It was very big news to me to find out that it was being suggested to be rezoned, so not really sure how that even happened. I don't think that's your guys' place, I think that's Wayne County's, but yeah, I don't know how that happened. As we landlocked that property, we should have been notified that it was being purchased by somebody else through the land bank. And it sounds like we'll be having another meeting on planning and proposals that might not go a little bit longer than I need to. I'd like to, where can I get that information? Where can I get EAQ, Department of Drainage, whoever's Department of the paving, right? Because that lot's currently not paved. Noise and light pollution issues, that's currently an issue, that's going to just be compounded. Screen wall issues, that is not there.
A lot of your concerns are more relevant for a site plan discussion. However, I'm sure the administration, the Building and Planning Department can, the amount of information that they can answer for you is only exceeded by the number of numbers that they can give you for other people that can answer your questions.
Correct. I have Eagle's number, I've already been contacted Eagle, so I've already been contacted them.
And I'm not sure who told you that parcels can't be alienated without your consent, that legally speaking, I'm an attorney.
Okay.
I assure you that a restraint on alienation like that is not legally sustainable.
Correct.
A landlocked property would be able to be purchasable, and unfortunately, you as the, you as the, as the property that's landlocking it, would actually potentially be subject to an easement of necessity.
Okay, and that was going to be one of my other questions, are we going to be forced to give easement to that?
Not, not as this is proposed.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess those were my questions, concerns, right? Like, I would like those to be taken into consideration, as those are our concerns moving forward, so if that has any consideration in the rezoning of this property, that's kind of where I would be, I just want to get all of that out, so we understand we're on the same page.
The owner is present, he can hear your concerns, and it does appear that he's taking them seriously.
Yeah, because I mean, it's a lot of expense if it has to go down that route, so.
I understand.
And wasting people's time is not cool, so, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anybody additionally on my right wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, anybody additionally on my left? The young woman with the, what is that, gold sweater?
Hello, my name is Andrea Chapman. I'll be three eight zero zero one, that dead end, where it would back up into the middle, where the line crosses over. My better half was just up here. So, my concern is safety concerns. Over the years, I've reached out to the city multiple times in regards to encroachment for the people in the back properties, coming through the gates, saying unsolicited things to myself and/or the children, and I would like to know what we're going to be doing, if we're going to be allowing additional access into our very private neighborhood in regards to keeping our privacy and our safety, because the encroachment's already been very real for me, and I have not had any support from safety other than to try not to go into the area, but if the area's coming to me, what do I do? What do I do? For me and my children, what do I do? And thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none, anybody additionally on my left? Ma'am, in the pink, is that a, no? Okay. Sir, if I could please have you retake the podium. Did you have anything to say before I open it up to the administration?
I just want to clarify, I just want, I just want to clarify that the lot south of the subject property is not owned or controlled by us, that's a completely different setup that we have nothing to do with.
Thank you. Is there anybody on my right wish to examine the petitioner? Seeing none. Anybody on my left wish to examine the petitioner? Seeing none. I thought I saw some movement on my right again. Is there anybody over on my right? I see two now. All right, we're going to start with Daryl, and then move to Deanna.
How are you, sir?
Good, how you doing?
Now, I was just curious, did you have a response for the young woman's concern that just left the podium before you?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I'm aware that almost a decade ago or so, there's been some issues with neighbors. Back at that time, when we first purchased a property, we had a lot of people that used to pay to park there, you know, and that has been resolved as of years ago, you know, so that particular flow, you know, it's not, you know, there's no issues, hasn't been issues in years with the neighbors there. And as far as the safety is concerned, you know, when I spoke about doing a block, a block wall is the proper term, right?
Screen wall.
You know, which would pretty much close up the whole thing.
Thank you. Recognizing Deanna Stachow.
Okay. I just have one question. What about the movement of the trucks and vehicles and so forth? What time of day do you start? What time, is this something that goes on all night? What exactly does the business have in relationship to ours?
Yes, ma'am. So, we're a 24-hours trucking company, you know, because we service automotive world, you know. One of the concerns, and because I'm here in front of you guys today, so automatically, the assumption is that the whole tractor-trailer traffic on Hicks is, it's us, which is not, wish we were that big, we're not. So, our equipment, our trucks, we do a lot of Texas, right? So, we service Mexico, US, and Canada for automotive just in time, and our trucks, unlike a lot of regional work that a lot of companies do, they're not at their home base as often as the regional companies are, you know, so they're one week gone before they come back to Michigan. You know, they do about 3,200 miles a week, and in order to accomplish that, you need five days on the road, you know, so our truck, or one particular truck, will be in our terminal once a week. So, I hope that answers the question, is how often they come in. I'm, you know, I live, I live in Canton, and I go, I drive on Hicks every day, and I see the same thing that, you know, those citizens said, you know, but we are not part of it. If I see someone of our drivers that might misbehave on Hicks, you know, shortly after that, he won't be one of our drivers anymore.
Yeah, because I did drive by the area, and just to check it out, and I noticed that there were a lot of trucks, vehicles, that were just basically parked there.
Correct.
And at that point in time, it was probably, should have been the most busiest time, in the afternoon, and coming and going, I didn't see too much in the way of movement. So, it looks like a basic industrial area to begin with. So, okay, well, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Anybody, oh, David Swokis.
So, I'm looking at this, and you're asking us to rezone from R3 to I-1, and I'm thinking about the residents, and I'm thinking about a fellow commissioner who has somewhat of a similar kind of situation with trucks and things like that, and, you know, we're losing green spaces, we're losing, you know, the ability to build, you know, single-family residential homes. Not that I'm saying that, you know, you have a right to build what you want, but we also have a right to not rezone it. For me, I just, I've lived in Westland almost 57 years of my life, and I've seen a lot of things change, and I live on the north end of Westland, and of course, I've seen a lot of the green space go away, and I know we're starting to talk about a lot of green spaces in our city, and we're trying to mitigate, to, you know, not take away so many trees, not take away some, and I think about kids, and I think about other cities that I've been in and lived in, and they've been more industrial, more like a concrete jungle, and people miss green areas, and I just, I'm not comfortable right now, honestly. I know that you have good intentions, but I don't know, I just, I think about little kids and trucks, and of course, yes, parents are responsible to keep their kids, you know, in the right spots and all that, but I just, right now, I just can't support rezoning from R3 to I-1 Light Industrial. I mean, I just would rather see a residential home there or something different, because I look at it this way, the citizens have got to be heard, and we have got to stop just saying, well, you know, it's progress, things move and that, and I think we see that in our country all over the place, that things are moving and things are being changed, and, you know, nobody likes change. But fortunately here, as a commission, we are a recommending body, and we send this on to council, and council could tell us, you know, we're going to send it anyway, but I personally, I'm not going to support this, and so I'll be voting no on this, in deference to the citizens.
Thank you, David. Did I see that Commissioner Durante wanted to be recognized? That's a shake of the head, no. Recognizing Commissioner Hopkins.
Do you own the property on Hickford? The house that's?
On Hickford?
Yes.
I can tell you, he doesn't own any of it.
Oh, okay.
It's on Hickford.
Those are our three houses.
Those are our three houses.
Okay, I see.
And mine, he's in the one next door to me, and she's on the one just to past him, and it's on the dead-end street, a little bit of country in the city, Cramble Road, which.
We appreciate it, sir. If you'd please return the normal order.
That's all I have.
All right.
But that's the answer to your question.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Anybody additionally on my right? Anybody additionally on my left? Seeing none, motion is in order?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Recognizing David Swokis.
Move that we take case 1055C, propose rezoning from R3 Mixed Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial District, 38272 Abruzzi Drive, and send it on to the city council with a recommendation for denial, and for the reasons that I outlined, and then anybody else?
Motion by Swokis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hopkins. Roll call, please.
Of course.
Yes, Mr. Rounds. I believe this is a point of order, or a point of privilege.
A point of order, yeah. So, an affirmative vote on this motion is saying that we recommend denial.
An affirmative vote on this motion indicates that you would like to deny the petition.
If you say yes, it's a denial.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to deny case number 1055C, Durante.
No.
Folks. I'm sorry. Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
No.
Rounds.
No.
Stachow.
No.
Swokis.
Yes.
Repport.
No.
The motion failed.
Motion to deny fails, is there a motion to send with a recommendation for approval?
Didn't you already do that?
Seeing none, is there a recommendation to move this on with a non-recommendation?
I'll agree with that.
Okay. I'll recognize you for that motion, Mr. Swokis.
Move case number 1055C, propose rezoning R3 Mixed Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial, 38272 Abruzzi Drive, northeast corner of Hicks and Marquette, and send it on to the city council with a neutral recommendation.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made by Swokis, seconded by Hopkins. Roll call, please. By point of clarification, a yes vote on this indicates that we are sending the matter on to the city council with a communication that we, as a body, could not come to a recommendation at all. Roll call, please.
I have to check the bylaws, and even if it's not in the bylaws, this is a recommending body, and you have a duty to send a recommendation to the city council.
We're sending a neutral recommendation. You can send a neutral recommendation.
Okay. I might be ignorant on what that actually means, can someone define that on the record, so I can move that forward to the city council property?
Very good. As the chair understands it, this body cannot come to a decision whether there is a denial recommendation or an approval recommendation. We are deferring to the judgment of the, of the city council. For the record, I do not approve of this for the exact same reason that the administration has stated. The fact of the matter is, is that this body makes a decision whether the proposal as proposed meets certain standards of our zoning ordinance or not. That determination is a yes or a no, it is a binary, and for us to abdicate our responsibility to make that determination, I understand that some of our members may have strong feelings and would wish to make a political statement about how they feel about these things, but ultimately, whether we approve or deny a particular petition is actually a function of how that petition relates to our zoning ordinance.
Well, I will withdraw my motion, but I will say this, it is not a political statement, it is a statement in favor of the residents, and I think that's our job here as commissioners. We owe it to the residents, we don't owe it to the administration, we don't owe it to the petitioner, we owe our votes and our consideration to the residents. I have three residents sitting back here, that they elect the people who appoint us to this board, they elect the mayor, and they elect the council, and this is an election year, yes, but this is not a political statement, because frankly, I will live and die by whatever votes I take. I stand on my integrity, and I said when I was asked to come to this board, I will put the residents first, and if I can't put the residents first, then I have no business being on this board, nor does anybody else, because they are the people who vote the people into office, they are the people who pay the bills in this city, and it is contingent for us as a commission to consider strongly the residents. We are asking to change a zoning, R3. We don't have much residential land left anymore in this city, and I would. zoning, R3. We don't have much residential land left anymore in this city. And I would say to everyone up here, what would you do if it was in your backyard? What would you do if it's in your backyard? Commissioner Hopkins can tell you what he has to contend with. I've seen it happen to me on Joy Road over the last 25, 30 years, all the things they built. We do not have to approve something if it's giving us an option to choose. Now, the chairman called for someone to make a motion to approve, and nobody stood up to make a motion to approve. I'll withdraw my motion if somebody wants to make a motion to approve, but I'm going to vote no on it, and I'm going to stand on my word. That's what we're here for. Stand up for the people. If you can't stand up for the people, who do you expect to stand up for you? That's all I have to say.
I want to be very clear. My statement that it is a political statement, I have a tendency to use words very specifically and precisely. And when I say that it is a political statement, I mean that it is related to policy, the policy that you would like to see. We were basically saying the same thing, Mr. Swokas.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you very much.
I withdraw my motion.
Motion is recognized as withdrawn. Is there a motion to approve, understanding that this, that the motion to approve is merely a statement that this proposal meets the minimum requirements of our zoning ordinance? Seeing none. I'm not exactly certain what to do here, administration. The board is not capable of making a...
Is there more information that the commission needs?
I don't believe that the, I don't believe that more information is actually going to resolve the issue here.
Can I say something?
I will give you a brief few moments.
All right. I see that there's a lot of mix, a lot of back and forth, so I'll make it easy for everyone. Being the owner, I do have choices, and I choose to withdraw my case. I have respect for quite a few members in this panel, and I don't want to put people in situations that go back and forth. You guys have a great day, and thank you for your time.
If that's the case, the item is still on the agenda. A motion is in order to table it indefinitely. Do I have that motion?
I move that we table case number 1055C, proposed rezoning from R3 Mixed Residential District to I1 Light Industrial District 38272 of Bruzy Drive, northeast corner of Hicks and Marquette indefinitely.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Recognizing Daryl Rounds for that motion, and the second is Deanna Stachow. Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call vote to table case number 1055C, Durante?
No.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Rounds?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
Swokas?
Yes.
Rapport?
Yes.
Okay, this case is tabled.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, please remember that this item was added, and the number five that you see on your agendas has been renumbered to six. If, this is a matter that I myself brought up at the last meeting, at the end of the last meeting, the language of the motion that I proposed, if our secretary, Ms. Hobbs, could suffer to remind us of the language that I proposed.
Whereas this body has previously adopted bylaws for the governance of business on about May 5, 2021, and in those bylaws, a three-year period was adopted for the renewal, review, and revision of those bylaws. However, upon the date prescribed in 2024 to take such action, this body failed to act as required, and recognizing that such failure was due to impracticality of a non-annual schedule, example, annual elections, and not intentionally or by design, it is proposed that Article 8, Section 6.13 shall be amended from... now it's blurry. Planning Commission bylaws shall be reviewed every three years from the date of adoption on May 5, 2024. Two, Planning Commission bylaws shall be reviewed annually. Proposed amendments may be submitted to the secretary by any reasonable means at any time, and shall be considered upon the December meeting or the first meeting held thereafter, whichever shall occur first. Voting on amendments to bylaws shall coincide with the annual election of officers or otherwise as the rules prescribe.
Thank you very much. As this was my motion, I'll be passing responsibility over presiding over this portion of our meeting to the vice chair. Vice chair, will you please take over the meeting?
Yes. So you made the motion?
I did make the motion, ma'am.
So do I get someone to second that?
I second it.
All right. Roll call, please.
Point of privilege. May I speak on the motion? Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. So this is primarily just a record-keeping kind of a thing. As the administration pointed out, it might be unnecessary. However, I felt that a casual and maybe creative reading of the, of what we were left with, being that the bylaws do state a specific date, could be interpreted that we missed the date to update our bylaws and therefore can no longer do it ever. That's kind of ridiculous. However, it does give us the opportunity to make a statement prior to December, this December, so that we can start adjusting our bylaws on an annual basis. So I do hope that the board agrees with me, and I personally feel that this motion should probably fail unless it is unanimous. So, thank you very much.
Is there any more to...
It should fail if it's not unanimous. It involves us actually making changes to our bylaws, which our bylaws don't actually approve of us doing yet.
I understand.
And that's why we want to do it.
Okay.
So can we go to roll call now?
Please do.
Roll call, please.
For what?
For his motion.
For his motion?
For I have a...
For the bylaws?
Sam, it's a motion to allow us to modify our bylaws.
You want a no vote on this?
I want a unanimous yes vote. That is what I'm hoping for. Because it's fundamental to our rules of governing, I think either A, everybody should be in agreement that we should do it, or it's a thing that we should...
I do. I'm very verbose. My apologies.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Fingers crossed, unanimous, to open up the bylaws for a review. Durante?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
Swokas?
Yes.
Rapport?
Yes. Thank you very much, board.
Motion passes.
You just had to do that, didn't you? All right. The last item on our agenda is item six. May I please have the authority back, Madam Chair? Thank you very much. Consideration to set and post a Planning Commission-initiated work session on May 6, 2025, immediately following the May 6, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, in order to review and discuss the Planning Commission and bylaws and commission-related matters. Administration, I believe that you would like to move this by a month. Is that correct?
Yeah, let's, if the commission is okay with it, we have six or seven items on the May agenda, so we might go on for a little later than today.
Are you going to buy us a nice dinner?
That's the plan.
You got to wink at us when you do it, too. All right, there we go. Fantastic. Recognizing David Swokas for that motion.
So item number six, I move that we set June 3, 2025, immediately following our Planning Commission meeting as a session to go over bylaws and take care of matters of housekeeping for the Planning Commission, and that's it.
Motion by, motion by Swokas, supported by Rounds. All those in favor, please indicate so. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Chair is not in doubt. Commissioners' comments, starting, I'm sorry? We do have one commissioner's comments that I feel is essential. Deanna, did you want to say anything about the ZBA?
It was, it is not pertaining to any of the petitions or documents that we addressed today, so I'll pass on them.
Okay, thank you. Administration, do you have anything?
See you next month.
By seeking unanimous consent to waive, otherwise waive, commissioner's comments. Hearing no objections, commissioner's comments is waived. Moving on to adjournment. Adjournment is in order. Recognizing Daryl Rounds, and the second is Mr. Hopkins. Those in favor, please indicate so. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Chair is not in doubt. We are adjourned.